Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our April 26th Town Council meeting. We're going to be continuing with our budget hearings tonight. Before we begin, I just need to go through our emergency evacuation plan. In the event of an emergency, please exit out the two doors to your left or the front door here, we would meet across the street at the school administration building and await further instructions. But we're not planning on any emergencies. If we could all now stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women serving in harm's way. Thank you all. I do need to go over a couple of ground rules. We, we are streaming, so for those of you that are attending remotely by phone, star six will allow you to mute and unmute your phone. Star nine will indicate that you have a question. If you're on the Zoom link, there's an icon to click the hand and we will understand you. You have a question, comment. Anybody participating remotely or in person tonight, please just state your name and address for the town clerk. And then we will go to roll call.
Mrs. Jafusa, present. Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Mr. Captain?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Agar?
Here. All right, so we're going to continue tonight with our budget. And our first item under the expenditures, we're going to go with the school committee or school department budget. So, Dr. Ken, what do you think?
Thank you. Good evening, Council President, Council members. Thank you for this opportunity to present tonight on behalf of the school committee, our school department, town budget proposal. I am going to walk through the majority of the presentation with you, which will cover primarily our operating budget. I will turn things over toward the end to Mr. Diarra, who will walk through a couple of slides that we have on some capital requests and then we'd be happy to take any questions. So, first, next slide. Alright, so first up is just again a review of our timeline. I know mirror is very much what happens on the town side. But what I will be presenting to you this evening.
Hold on one second.
It's blinking red. It's not showing any, alright. Alright, give me a second, I'll pull it up on mine. Go ahead, Tom, sorry.
So again, what I am presenting to you this evening is our, our school committee approved budget request for next fiscal year. This process for us, so as I was mentioning, just like on the town side starts, you know, many months before then in, in October and is the culmination of a lot of hard work on, on the part of many people in our district, primarily our school and district administrators. So I just wanted to take the time to acknowledge their hard work and efforts upfront. Several of them are here with us this evening. I know many others are, you know, tuning in remotely. So thank you to, to everyone you know, who contributes to this process. Next slide is so a summary again of our main strategic plan goals. So we are in kind of the middle of this current strategic plan. These are our main priority goals and they have served us very well here as we've guided the district throughout the pandemic. And now as we look to, you know, move forward into what is can hopefully a completely post pandemic focused educational world. And that is very much the budget that we have built here in our request for next fiscal year. So, next slide, just wanted to highlight in this presentation, and I know all this information is available to council members in more detail in the more detailed budget backup that we've provided. But our enrollment projections, again, right about the time that we hit the pandemic, we were kind of at, at the bottom of what was, you know, slow kind of trickle decline in enrollment that many districts throughout the, the Northeast New England area had been experiencing throughout the, you know, 2000s. We are in the midst of what is projected to be gonna, you know, we, we won't get quite to the levels that we are at, but it's going to be a steady increase forward. So that again, over the next 10 years, you'll see that we are projected to gain back close to about 10% additional enrollment there. So we are, we are definitely starting to see in our early grades those numbers which should continue to rise throughout the years. So next slide is just very high level overview, you have a lot more backup information on this, but for our operating budget on the expenditure side, our proposed budget is for operating budget is forty two million, two hundred fourteen thousand, four hundred ninety nine dollars. An increase of slightly over a million dollars for next fiscal year. Primary drivers of that, I just highlighted a few. We are presently in contract negotiations with our two main unions, NEA Portsmouth and Council 94. You've probably heard me reference that the last few years, but we did get the cooperation of both of those unions to just roll over. We're, we're coming off consecutive one year rollover agreements with both of those unions. So the intention from both sides was a full negotiations this year. We're in the process of that with both of those unions. Again, average salary increases throughout the district over the past two years with those one year rollovers was about 1.25% that applied across the board of, you know, for all of our administrators as well. I know we heard reference last night, Mr. Rayner's presentation to the current inflation rate. And while we're not anticipating that, you know, salaries will, will increase by, you know, exactly the amount to cover that. You know, I think we, we did have to build in contingencies there. And just the way that inflation has affected overall costs, other drivers here that you'll see on the expenditure side. And there are a few new positions that we're looking to add this year, and we have not done that the past couple of years. Primarily those are related to IEP needs of special education students. I can explain one of those in a little more detail. So for students with our most severe you know, cognitive needs typically participate in what we call a life skills program. So when we left the regional collaborative now about, you know, probably six, seven years ago, we brought that program in-house. And, you know, we've run a very successful program there for those, those students and their families. Students in that program are able to participate if parents choose until the age of 22. And we are at the point now in that program where we're starting to see older students approaching those, those years of 20, 21, 22. One of the issues that presents for us is we also by law cannot have students mixing within a certain age span. If you think about a high school freshman coming in at the age of 14. So we are next year going to need to open an additional classroom there. And so when we're looking at some of the positions that we're requesting based on IP needs, that's, that's one example there. And similar to probably last year, you might have heard me reference some of the needs around high quality curriculum materials and resources, and this is really a national effort, but definitely being driven on the, on the state level. So in the areas of math, ELA and science now, this is, is the focus there. There are very, it's a very short prescribed list of materials that, you know, Ride says meets that high quality curriculum need. And so we are in the efforts of, of bringing in those resources in all of those areas. So again, all of, all of that contributing to what will essentially be an increase of 2.6% that you'll see here in this proposed expenditure summary for next year. Next slide, again, a high level overview of revenues to cover that need. Last night, I know Mr. Raina referenced a decrease you're feeling in all areas on the town side as well with state funding. So for us, you know, that outside of the town appropriation, that's the next biggest area we would, we would look to for revenue. So we have been experiencing a decrease in state aid over the past few school years. And the main state aid number, number there, roughly over $3 million that you see there is, you actually, we got some more favorable news before we went into our, you know, finalizing the budget, the school committees that Governor McKee is proposing to hold all, all districts to the same level. So, so that was good news there, but the other two main factors on the school side that go into the stated formula, the high cost special ed education numbers and group homes, home aid are projected to decrease there. So it's roughly a total of 165,584. Now, before we get to the town appropriation, the other way in the district that we look to offset with, with some of those revenues is for outside tuition. So our main area being our relationship with Little Compton. We were able to negotiate for next year, which is a, a one year extension to our current contract, which is expiring with them. A, a rate, a higher tuition rate than they've been paying. So that's going to, we're going to see an increase there in that overall revenue from Little Compton. In addition to what's been a very successful program for us. You know, if I was, if I was standing here five, six years ago, we would not be able to, to say this, but we were able to, you know, start and grow approved ride CTE career and tech programs at Portsmouth High School. One of the biggest advantages to that and what it provides to Portsmouth High School students is that we're able to draw in students from outside districts. So next year, we are projecting to be up to almost 40 students from outside districts. And so outside of Portsmouth, Little Compton, from Newport, Middletown, Bristol Warren, probably our next biggest feeder district who, you know, choose to come to Portsmouth High School, those districts and then pay the tuition. So again, that, that number has been increasing for us over the years. So that helps offset the revenue picture a little bit. But with that, our request to support this operating budget would be 2.0% increase to the town appropriation. Next slide. So if we look again at the last five years, how these, you know, requests both for the, you know, budget as a whole, and then the town appropriation compare. So the proposed increase to the operating budget is slightly higher than what we've seen over the last five years. Few different factors there, right? I talked about the inflation numbers already, but definitely just everything that we're looking to do in, in this post pandemic world now to really ensure that we're providing a high quality education for our students. Outside of, you know, we, I know we have additional federal monies coming in. We're going to cover that in some additional side. But, you know, the programs that we know, programs and services we know are just part of the core instructional program. We should be addressing through our operating budget. But you can see there again, for the town appropriation side, that the 2.0 request in town appropriation is actually slightly less than what the five year average would be there. So next slide is again, just to highlight. I, I hope that you appreciate as much as we do on the school side, the cooperative collaborative relationship we have between the town and school. I know, you know, all we have to do is, is look at the news on it on any day in local communities and, you know, we're, they're not as fortunate as we are here in this town and district. So we appreciate that relationship on the school side very much. And these are again, as, as you're aware of, just some of the key areas in which we regularly share resources and services. Next slide. You have more detail on this as well, but whenever we do this presentation, again, we just want to make sure if anyone has questions, we can refer back to actual numbers. So we know that on the school department side, we are the one town department that's able to carry over if we do have our own surplus. These are our surplus accounts on the school department side. So the first two are, and if you recall, when we go over these, this is just based on best practice, actuarial, aerial, excuse me, advice. We do have a school department policy. So any surplus we have, the first place it goes is to this rainy day fund, which is, you know, again, by best practice recommendation, supposed to be at least 1.5% of your overall operating budget. We do have a, a small OPEB fund that we have just continued to maintain on the school department side there as well. So that's what we would consider our, our restricted surplus funds on the school department side. The capital fund, then again, any money that's left over from there goes into this capital improvement fund. Now for the next few years, our primary focus is going to be around ensuring that those projects, those health and safety projects that were approved by the bond, you know, are completed on time. And, you know, we're able to get, get through all of those projects. You've heard me speak though, more recently, we are starting to leave the groundwork for outside of that, the main items that we know we need to start addressing. And we talk about those shared services and community use of facilities. But all of the T3 projects, the track, the turf, the tennis courts, they all in the next few years are going to be coming up on, you know, what would be the recommended point that we would look at repairing, replacing any materials there. As we started to do our assessment of that this year, you're going to see that another area actually rose to the, to the top of that. We'll be talking about the, the stadium lights later on, Mr. Duro's slides. So then any other funds that we would consider surplus funds are in that local COVID related fund. Again, in the spring of 2000, when we first entered the pandemic and went into complete distance learning, we, we saw some savings there as, as all school districts did. We, school committee immediately took action to, you know, put a portion of those savings into a fund. We've been, you know, using it for COVID related purposes over the last few years. Little bit of money left there. One of the things we would like to continue is additional support for our nursing staff. Hopefully we don't need anywhere close to the level of support for other COVID related needs that we've seen. But that is something that we think will still be useful. Next slide then is a summary. Again, our, our operating budget request is primarily what we're asking you to approve this evening. But when we're, we're talking about our entire budget and just to be completely transparent here, as you're aware, that also includes some of these restricted federal funds that come in on a yearly basis. And so this is, this is just the total picture on what with the addition of those funds, our budget would look like. These again are federal funds that relate to either special education, a title one, which is intended to be directed primarily toward improving outcomes for students on free and reduced lunch. There's some you know, vocational tech, career and tech educational money, that kind of thing. Another key factor there is that we all school districts are the conduit, if you will, for private schools in a municipality. So any private schools in Portsmouth are able to access a certain percentage of those funds as well. And we have to be the again, kind of conduit for them to, to be able to do that. So with the addition of, of those restricted funds kind of in and out of our budget, that's what the total picture looks like. Next few slides. Next slide. Will address kind of the bigger picture, if you will, on the, the federal funds coming in that have started to come in and will come in over the next few school years specifically related to, you know, COVID and post COVID pandemic educational goal. So these are part of what you are probably more commonly here, here referred to as the American Rescue Plan. On the school department side, we more commonly refer to it as ESSA, the elementary and secondary schools educational relief money. So on the school side, there were two main pots of that money, S or two and S or three. S or two has carried us over the last school year and this school year, fiscal year, sorry, and S or three will be the subsequent school years following. So this is just a breakdown of those total funds. The next few slides just gets into some detail. This first slide again, related to S or two. So again, these funds have been written for, approved by Ride in the process of, you know, being applied. But the primary purpose of these S or two funds was to remediate post pandemic, or excuse me, pandemic related learning loss. So it was about really increasing things that, you know, districts were doing around summer learning before and after school programming, transportation of students needed it to those programs and things like that. I still have a little bit of money that will carry over there into next school year. And then next slide for S or three. Again, this will take us through next fiscal or school year and then the, a year beyond. You can see the breakdown there. So 75% of those funds, when we wrote for them, we did just recently receive full approval from, from Ride for our use of these funds and what we've laid out, we would use them for. But 75% of them again, as we enter this kind of post pandemic mindset about accelerating learning, right? So it's not necessarily so much now about addressing learning loss. So you will see, for instance, in here, some, some new positions, right, that we'd be looking to add. But these are things that we're saying, we're going to, we're going to have them for maybe a year or two, but we don't foresee them in the, you know, extended future. But we're really going to try new innovative things to accelerate that learning. And we were able to use up to 25% of that for capital needs. So we did take advantage of that. And you can see there, the main ways that we sought to address that and received approval for was the updating of classroom furniture for the middle and high school. You're going to see again, some further examples of that in a few slides. And then updating the HVAC units around that air quality concern for the middle and high school libraries. And next slide, I believe is the last for me. Just wanted to point out, again, specific to this past current school year. Again, could go on for much longer, as you know, with, you know, some of the achievements and accolades that we're able to see with, within our schools. You know, we just have fantastic students, families, professional staff here in the district. But specific to this school year, just wanted to highlight some things. So we, we did as a district win a US Department of Education green ribbon. So you may be more familiar with the blue ribbon, which is kind of for the academic excellence, green ribbon is around environmental education and sustainability. And it's, it's really starting to, to pick up steam. And we are the only Rhode Island school district to have been awarded this green ribbon, one of the few entire districts across the country. And again, just kind of highlights some of the fantastic work that's been able to be accomplished in, in our district over the last few years around environmental education and sustainability. As you know, we did win approval in the fall by a two thirds majority of Portsmouth voters for our health and safety improvement bond. I would like to think that that translates to, you know, at least a two thirds favorability opinion of how things are going in the district. Again, we're very grateful for that support. You know, we try every opportunity to look for additional grant funding to help offset, you know, things outside of our, our operational budget or what would be coming to ask from the town side. So we got a huge one this year in a Department of Education, half million dollar grant intended to be spent over the next five school years in, in that Van Buren grant there around science, also a lot of those environmental sustainability efforts that I was talking about. And the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission had a competitive grant, our technology department applied for it. Again, a couple hundred thousand dollars there really helped to offset some needs we have in the area of technology that we don't have to ask for in our operating budget. We completed a comprehensive district equity analysis in the fall. And so can all, all districts across the country are struggling with the issues of related to equity and how to best serve all students and stakeholders in their district. And I, I think we took, as, as we tried to do in this district, a very measured approach to wanting to make sure we had comprehensive stakeholder feedback around that. So we were able to gather that, we use a third party to help us with that. We have those results now, we're using them, you know, to help us make better informed decisions around ensuring we can, excuse me, ensure those improved outcomes for all students. You see then there, I just picked one highlight, could have gone on for much longer for each of our schools. And then the many, many successes that we're able to see in the athletic and extracurricular areas in our district. So again, thank you, the, the funding that we received does, does help us to, to be able, you know, to provide those things for our students and families. So Mr. Duro, we'll take the sides we have around capital and then we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. The evening, so as you know, as Dr. Ken were, were the mentioned, we have the bond proceeds of $21.4 million that we'll use over the next several years to fund our five year capital plan. So we don't have a traditional cap request tonight, obviously knowing that we have those funds for the next several years. But we are requesting the use of town impact fees. We have two projects that we're requesting. The first project, which is up there, you can see is removing old carpet from 36 classrooms at the Portsmouth Middle School and replacing that with tile. We were able to do four rooms this year, and it was a really big hit with the teachers and the administrators. So they really wanted to do the rest of the rooms. The second project is, it's a 300,000, if you, yeah, perfect, thank you. It's a 300,000, 480 dollar new stadium lighting system that comes with a $53,308 national grade incentive. So the total cost would be 247,172 of town impact fees. Those are our two requests for next year.
That's it, so I told Mr. Duro, he can take all the questions.
I'm happy to.
I just one quick question to begin with. Any particular reason for the 136,000 dollar drop in group aid? I mean, the group homes aren't getting smaller.
It, yeah, it's the number of beds that are open and they do a count. Last year, they, they do a second count in December. And when they did that count, we actually received an extra 102,000 in this year's budget. I'm sorry, last year's budget. So those, those beds open and close periodically. So they do two counts and this one is the, the one being used for the governor's recommendation. They will do another one in December, and if there's change, we'll get additional funding.
Okay, so the, the your approved budget last year was 609,000. Keep going blind. For FY21.
473 this year. Your, your total revenue this year then was more around the 715 mark. I'm just rounding based on 102, one of them.
Yeah, so, yeah. Yes, let me, let me clarify that. So in FY21, our budget was about 507,000. They did the count that year and they gave us the extra 102, which got us to 609. So we budgeted for 609 last year. I'm sorry, for this year, but for next year's projection, it looks like some beds have closed. And again, well, they'll do another count in December.
Okay.
And the, the, the lights, are we just replacing the, the main pieces of the lights? We're not replacing the poles or do we have to replace all the poles and everything goes along with it?
No. Yeah, the poles are fine, so they'll put new fixtures in, new white LED lights and a wireless control system as well.
Thanks.
Mr. Duro, may I ask? I understand why school districts that are economically challenged, you know, inner, inner city schools would be getting more funding than Portsmouth. But could you explain generally why communities like Barrington and East Greenwich are getting more state aid than we are?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a complex issue, but I think I can probably break it down. It is really one of the biggest drivers is the amount of taxable real estate that Portsmouth has compared to other communities relative to the number of students in the school district. So if you look at the amount of taxable property in Portsmouth and compare it to say East Greenwich or Barrington, the amount the amount per student is roughly a hundred and fifty percent more. And I think in the case of East Greenwich, it might even be two hundred percent more. So when the state is developing their formula, they look, that's a very big driver of how that calculation determines the amount of state aid. Um, and that really does not work in Portsmouth's favor because it basically says to the state that Portsmouth ha- has the ability to use its own local resources to fund education. And it, it's what winds up causing us to lose out, uh, if you will, every year.
I feel like there's a disconnect then between our desire to have folks come here with no children as a means of saving money for this town, um, not having to spend it on our schools and ending up being harmed by that very policy. If we aren't encouraging families to move in with children, we are getting less state aid. So the, you know, residential recreational policy that we are pursuing in some ways has hurt us, has it not?
Well, I'll leave that to you guys to decide. Um, I would just say, like, say, for example, Barrington has fifty percent more students, but probably like about half the taxable real estate as Portsmouth. So that, that's how those numbers go into the formula, and that's what hurts us every year.
They have more kids.
A lot more kids.
Well, they have more kids in the school system.
Fifty percent more in the school.
So we have, we have a lot of kids, but maybe they're going to private schools or something along those lines.
Yeah.
So the kids are not, we might have similar numbers, but they're just not in our school system.
Not enrolled in our school system.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll, I'll ask one more question. I'm sure back to six or seven slides back to the, uh, um, shared use or shared services, I think it is. Three years ago, um, the decision was made by the school department to bring on their own HR department, and now we have redundancy. In terms of HR, we have a full HR department here, we have an HR department and the school department. I would like to see that discontinued. Ninety percent of the employees for the town and the schools are underneath contracts that obligate them to certain salaries and certain benefits. I think there's a, a way that we can reduce costs on both sides in order to save both the ta- taxpayers' money and better utilize services between our HR department and the newly formed HR department and the school department.
Address that?
Yeah.
Sure. So, so thank you, Ms. Hamilton. And I know it's, uh, an area that, you know, may look like, uh, you know, another area, you know, that we could pull into the, to the shared services easily. I, I think a few things that I, I would say there, um, if, if you recall. So prior to a couple of years ago and, and the, the school department, um, you know, bringing on our, our own true, uh, HR specialists, we did try, right? And particularly in that area, um, to share services with the town. Um, yeah, I, I think it was just a, you know, very, uh, you're not ideal management situation, uh, on both sides. Uh, you know, I'll just point again, although the majority of, of the employees may fall under those, those two main collective bargaining units, you're talking about over three hundred and thirty additional employees on the, uh, school department side. Uh, there are a lot of needs outside of what may be spelled out directly in those contracts that our, our HR director is dealing with on a daily basis. And I know on, on the school department side, we feel very strongly that it, it's been an addition that has, you know, for whatever amount of money we're spending in that area, it, it is, you know, benefiting us with increased efficiencies and probably savings, you know, that would be, you know, very hard for us to spell out, but definitely savings that are there. It was a, a key recommendation, you know, to us for many years prior to us bringing that position on, uh, from lawsuits, you know, if you will, that we had to settle that, you know, the feeling was if, if we had just a, you know, somebody with a little more focus who was, was looking at, uh, you know, things in that area, it, it, it could have helped alleviate some situations. So, um, you know, those are the main points I would make there. Right? I can definitely see the, uh, you know, area coming up as a question, but I know myself personally in the school committee, um, you know, it's, you know, I, I can't tell you how valuable that position has been to us over the last few years.
Can you, without without going into a specific detail on a specific lawsuit?
Mm-hmm.
Try to enumerate the savings, because roughly the position is a hundred thirty, a hundred forty thousand dollars when you figure in.
And if it's, yeah.
Anything else, right?
Mm-hmm.
So is that position saving more than that? And do you think just because we aren't using our side and however it was worked, whether it was communication back and forth across the street? I still think there's a way that we can make it work and save the town money.
Yeah, again, um, you know, I did think, well, I can't pinpoint an exact number, the, you know, and we, we, we're very fortunate, right? We, we obviously felt there was a need for that position. We, we, we created it based it on models in other districts. And, and we were able to find an individual who has a high level of training in school department, human resources, like it, it is its own specific area. So just, you know, the, the oversight that comes from that individual around policy redevelopment, uh, contract negotiations, which are in right now, just things that that individual would, would know to look for and point out that, you know, myself or other members or, or administrative team wouldn't, you know, those are the types of things that just o- over the years add up more and more uh, to just increased efficiencies. And, you know, at the, at the end of the day, I can assure you, saving us, um, you know, a lot of, you know, a lot of headaches and, and, and money, I'm sure.
At some point, we'll have a discussion, we'll try and figure out.
Sure, I can.
Privately, we can try and do.
I can definitely look for more specific examples. I don't know, am I missing anything there?
No, I just think it's, you know, a lot of that position is compliance related. There's a lot of compliance that goes into that. It's not just about saving money, but certainly, again, we, we can talk privately, I can give you some examples of things that I could tell you specifically that did save money. Happy to be a part of that conversation.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Mr. Fitzmorris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry Fitzmorris, fifty, Kristen Court have a quick question regarding the, uh, general aid, the funding formula. Uh, it's been a bone of contention between uh, the school committee and, uh, the assembly and the town council and the assembly. I noticed that this year you're using the same numbers last year. Is, is that a guess or do we have guidance that tells us that's going to be a reasonably accurate number?
Yes, so the original general assembly proposal was lower than that, but Governor, he, in his budget. He just basically said we're gonna hold every district to.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I think, I guess if I can ask Ms. Lasky, I, I I looked, but I don't remember the number. What is, is it four hundred fifty-two thousand dollars in impact fees available right now? Okay. I, I somewhere in there. I think it was four fifty-two. And a broader question, these are all available to be used now. Four twenty-five.
Can you use, I'm sorry, can you use the microphone, please?
Four hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that number was as of June thirtieth audit. So I did, that's
Right.
A little old and they're likely more, more in it at this point with none being used.
Okay, so, Mr. President, um, if we can turn to page sixty-eight of the budget. Sixty-eight. Plus five. Okay. So on page, uh, page sixty-eight, uh, you can see, uh, where we have, uh, the school budget. Um, the school committee, uh, as you've just heard, has approved the school administration proposed budget, which includes a request for a town appropriation of thirty-six million, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Uh, as you've heard, the school committee is not asking for any town appropriation for school capital. I therefore recommend the town council provisionally approve a total town appropriation of thirty-six million, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujafuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
The remainder of the school's total budget includes both restricted and unrestricted funds. On this page, you can see federal aid is projected to be one hundred eighty thousand dollars. State aid is projected to be three million, three, uh, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. Restricted revenue is projected to be one million, eight hundred eighty-three thousand and thirty-three dollars. And then on the following page, you can see the miscellaneous revenue is projected to be two million, three hundred ten thousand, five hundred dollars. So total town, federal and state funding is projected to be forty-four million, ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. We therefore ask the council to provisionally approve the total school restricted and unrestricted budget for forty-four million, ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
So move again. Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujafuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you. So, um, if we can go to page nine of the budget book, uh, there you'll see the executive summary. So here we have the executive summary of proposed expenditures towards the bottom of the page. Overall expenditures are proposed to increase, as I said last night, one point two nine percent to sixty-nine million, nine hundred sixty-seven, uh, nine hundred sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars. Tonight, we will focus on public safety and public works. So if we can turn to page forty-eight of the budget.
But, Mr. President, real quick, um, are we gonna do the impact fees in the capital budget or are we gonna, we need to provisionally approve those?
Impact fees will have to be a separate agenda, I think. Page forty-eight. On page forty-eight, uh, we begin the expenditure, uh, budget for police. I don't want to call Chris hostage here or anybody else.
Now, now's your chance, or you gotta sit through everything.
So here you can see the, uh, the proposed, uh, salary and benefit expenditures. During negotiations for the current police contract, the proposal for the addition of a corporal rank, uh, was turned down by the union and we subsequently, uh, withdrew that proposal. Ensuing negotiations went past the previous contract end date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty. We finally agreed to a new contract last year. In accordance with the agreement, three sergeant positions were added, which were pulled from, uh, patrol officer and strength. So we therefore have one accreditation sergeant, one detective sergeant, and then six additional sergeants to be distributed among three shifts. Additionally, two captain positions were created and non-pensionable stipends were created to offset their pay from the lieutenants below them in rank. Also, in accordance with the memorandum of agreement with the PMEA or Clerks Union, three clerks were promoted to a level above C clerk, the police clerk, the assistant town clerk, and the senior finance clerk, and the HR assistant slant payroll clerk was removed from the union. The promotion of the three clerks will be phased in over the next few years. Last year, you reduced the school operations budget by eighty thousand dollars as they will no longer provide funding for the school SROs. Additionally, in this budget, you'll see that Juneteenth, uh, there's, there's additional holiday pay because Juneteenth was declared a federal holiday last year and holiday pay was adjusted in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement. Additionally, I am proposing the hiring of a records clerk to be postponed to June twenty twenty-three. And the DPW mechanic is, who is responsible for the maintenance of the police vehicle fleet, has been moved to the police station to work out of a new police vehicle maintenance bay. His salary is now captured in the police budget. The chief, housekeeper, proposed clerk and mechanic all fall under the town four oh one plan, and the required contributions are reflected in this budget. The benefits section, uh, reflects, uh, the decreased actuarially required contribution of the art pay, payment, uh, for twenty twenty-three. If we turn to the next page, or you're, yeah, uh, on operations. So operationally, we are projecting an increase in continued education costs, which we are obligated to fund under state law.
Excuse me, Mr. Uh, wait here for a second. Uh, Barbara, on Zoom right now, you can only see part of the page. You, you go, yeah, go to the left if you can. Move, move the page to the left if it's possible. Oh, yeah, panel. You can only see the actuals of twenty twenty right now on the Zoom meeting. I, well, then I'll change mine. It might be. Yeah, some days. Okay, you're all set. Just wanna make sure it's okay for folks at home.
Okay. So, uh, in addition to the continuing education costs, we are also seeking national accreditation under the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, or CALEA. And we have budgeted the costs associated with that accreditation. Fuel costs have risen significantly and we have budgeted a twenty-five percent increase in vehicle fuel costs and almost a one hundred percent increase in heating costs. So overall, we are projecting a one point four eight percent increase in expenditures and request provisional approval of seven million, three hundred four thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars for the police budget.
Ask one quick question. I see we've taken out the extra money for school zone traffic enforcement. Are we gonna be able to do that just in a normal cycle without extra shifts?
Okay.
I, I haven't seen as many complaints this year, but they're still there. And correct, and also just for the record, you owe your officer who does the site, the crosswalk thing in September a coffee, because she has to buy her own, you should be buying it for her. Because I walked across the street with her twice when she was doing the, uh, decided to crosswalk at the high school.
Definitely. So we have, uh, supplemented it with our own, uh, officers. Um, we're gonna still continue with that program. Uh, we have not, uh, had the complaints, uh, this year. Uh, granted, the springtime's our busy time. I believe there's probably about thirty-nine, forty more days left of the school year. So this is the time we're gonna really, uh, ramp up our efforts in that location.
From having a school teacher and a sister-in-law who's a school teacher, I believe it's thirty-five. Not that she's counting in her window. Motion to provisionally approve the police department budget at seven million, three hundred and four thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. If you turn now to page fifty-one of the budget. Here we have the Prudence Island Safety Officer budget. The Prudence Island Safety Officer budget is proposed to remain relatively flat, except for fuel costs and congressually, congressional, contractually mandated increase, increases in pay and benefits. We therefore project a one point zero-one percent increase in the Prudence Island Public Safety Officer budget, and we are asking for provisional approval of one hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred and one dollars for the Prudence Island Safety Officer expenditures.
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
So if we go to the next page, page fifty-two. Here we have the Animal Control Officer budget. We are seeking this year to align the Animal Control Officer's salary to state comparable salaries in a way that does not increase the town's pension liabilities by adding a stipend. Otherwise, animal control expenditures are projected to remain relatively flat, except for fuel costs and congressionally mandated. I got Congress on the line. Contractually mandated obligations. We ask for provisional approval of one hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars for this budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. On the next page, page fifty-three of the budget, here we have the Harbor Master budget. We are budgeting for increased fuel expenses for the boat and for the replacement of six out of fourteen no-wake buoys. Additionally, we anticipate five thousand dollars in expenses for fairway markers contingent upon an impending United States Coast Guard study. Overall, we propose to increase this budget by nine point one-one percent and ask for your provisional approval of one hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars for the Harbor Master budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott? Running on.
There you go.
There you go. Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. If we turn to page fifty-four, here we have the Fire Department budget. With regard to salaries, it's important to note that we are still in negotiation with the fire union, yet we hope to ratify an agreement prior to the current contract expiration date of June thirtieth. For the purposes of budgeting, we are projecting a two percent pay raise consistent with the other three town collective bargaining units. Additionally, we calculated sick time, vacation buyback, and overtime costs relative to the amounts for which we could be contractually obligated and recent averages. I am also leveling the salaries of the Director of DPW, Fire, and Police. With regard to benefits, on the next page, page fifty-five, it's important to note here that, as you saw on the police budget, the decrease in defined benefit cost is attributed to the decrease actuarially required contribution for fiscal year twenty-three. On page fifty-six, we have fire operations. You'll notice the elimination of gas, diesel, and vehicle maintenance expenses. These costs will be paid from the Public Safety Capital Fund established last year. Overall, the proposed budget is projected to decrease by four point eight-four percent, and we ask for provisional approval of seven million, fifty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the fire budget.
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. On page fifty-seven, you'll see the expenditures that we project for the safer grant hires. Eight firefighters were hired last year under a federal funding grant. This Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant covers three years of firefighter salaries. The grant funds are in a restricted account, which is drawn down to offset the salaries and benefits associated with these employees. The expenditures listed on this page have no impact on the general fund, and this information is presented for information and tracking purposes. There's no vote necessary. On the next page, you see the budget for the Emergency Management Director. Our perk, our part-time emergency manager, management director has historically been compensated well below the actual numbers of hours that he works, and his salary is significantly lower than professional emergency managers on average. I am proposing we compensate this position at the level of the Business Development Director, our only other part-time director. This accounts for the increase in this budget proposal. We therefore ask for provisional approval of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars for emergency management.
No, that was just the change.
No, I'm sorry. I did it again.
Thirty-six oh six.
But it's not congressionally mandated.
It's not congressionally mandated. So we asked for provisional approval of thirty-six thousand, sixty dollars for emergency management.
So moved.
So moved, or seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And now we'll move on to DPW. DPW budget starts on page fifty-nine. We are projecting a two percent increase in DPW salaries for the next fiscal year. As previously mentioned, I am leveling the salaries of the Director of DPW and the Chiefs of the Fire and Police Departments. With regard to benefits, as you saw on the police and fire budgets, the decrease in the defined benefit cost is attributed to the decrease in the R payment for fiscal year twenty-three. On page sixty and sixty-one, we have the operations. With the exception of utilities, fuel, and contract costs, there are no significant increase in the operations budget. So overall, on page sixty-one, the proposed DPW budget is projected to increase slightly by zero point seven-five percent, and we ask you to provisionally approve the DPW budget of three million, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. On page sixty-two, at the top half of that page, you'll see the snow removal budget. As reported at the, in the December thirty-first finance report, the Snow Reserve Fund stood at one hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. In addition to normal snow events for the remainder of winter, there was a blizzard on January twenty-ninth. It was declared an emergency and also fell on a weekend. This significantly drove up our overtime costs and required the use of the reserve fund to offset expenditures. The snow reserve balance now stands at seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars. I propose we keep the snow removal budget at the same level as last year and ask for your provisional approval of one hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. In the bottom half of that page, you'll see the road improvement budget. In accordance with the road paving program and the road safety assessment that was conducted a year ago, we are proposing a fifty thousand dollar increase in this budget. This represents a five point seven-one percent increase in this line, and we ask for provisional approval of nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the road improvement budget.
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor? Nope. Sorry, jumped the gun.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've been running this road repair and replacement program for some time. I'll point to the obvious, which I think most of the council knows. It's a very popular program and it's been very efficient so far. I commend those people involved with it. I think it's a positive thing that we haven't lost control of the funding on this thing. It remains in the operational budget, and it hasn't drifted over into the debt budget, as it did once before, and ended, virtually ended the program. So this is a positive thing in many regards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. So if we turn to page sixty-three, the last item for this evening is the Prudence Island Transfer Station budget. We are proposing maintaining funding for an additional person to cover the station when the current guard is unavailable due to time off and sickness. Additionally, DEM is mandating two additional landfill tests per year to test the water quality at the site. This accounts for the increase in that line. Overall, we project a ten point seven-nine percent increase in this budget and ask for provisional approval of one hundred twenty, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton? Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
That concludes public safety and public works. So in accordance with the plan, we will cover the rest of the budget, hopefully tomorrow.
Does the agenda lock us into not doing any, we can't go any further? It doesn't.
No.
But nothing was, so can we bang off a few of the easy ones like the town council budget?
Why don't we do, uh, we can do town council, town administrator, town clerk? My notes are on.
And you know, well, I mean, town council's easy. It hasn't changed. It doesn't change.
So if we turn, uh,
we can't give ourselves a raise.
No. Not unless it's congressionally mandated.
So, if you turn to page twenty-eight,
the citizens have to give the council a raise, and I don't think that's ever going to happen.
Here on page twenty-eight, you see the annual, or I'm sorry, you see the town council budget. Here, we've kept the annual town council contribution to the Portsmouth Education Foundation and the Post-Prom Committee. And you'll see that there is a slight increase for postage and miscellaneous expenditures. Overall, the proposed budget increased by zero point four-six percent. We're asking for provisional approval, approval of ten thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars for the town council budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
If you go to the next page, page twenty-nine, you'll see the town administrator budget. Changes here are due mainly to pay adjustments and contractual obligations. In accordance with the memorandum of agreement, as part of the collective bargaining agreement with the PMEA Union, as I stated earlier, three clerks are programmed, were, were programmed to be promoted to a level above the current C clerk position. And again, that was the police records clerk, the assistant town clerk, and the senior finance clerk. Additionally, the HR assistant slant payroll clerk was removed from the union, and her promotion was immediate. The promotion of the three union clerks will be phased in over the next few years. Pay adjustments were modeled on the former D clerk pay schedule. I therefore adjusted the administrative assistant salary to be at an equivalent level. Overall, the budget has increased by five point four-seven percent, and we are asking for provisional approval, approval of three hundred twenty thousand dollars, three hundred twenty thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars.
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, if we turn to page thirty, here we have the town clerk budget. So I've just discussed the memorandum of agreement with regard to the PMEA Union. The assistant town clerk listed here is the second of three PMEA positions to be promoted to a level above the current C clerk. Additionally, I'm adjusting the salary of the town clerk to ensure that her compensation package is commensurate with other employees of equal responsibility and recognizes this position manages three to four employees. With regard to operations, which are on page thirty-one, this operations budget for the town clerk reflects the movement of miscellaneous expenses and dog license printing costs into the postage and miscellaneous line. It also accounts for forecasted expenses related to advertising and anticipated code ordinance changes. So overall, the proposed town clerk budget is projected to increase by one point zero-four percent, and we ask for provisional approval of four hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So moved.
Seconded. Mr. President, I'd like a quick discussion on the town clerk's budget, and it goes in hand in hand with the next budget in line here on page thirty-two. In twenty-sixteen, the Citizens of Portsmouth voted to create a nonpartisan position of town clerk, which in theory was to help solidify or consolidate some of the work done between the canvassing and the town clerk's offices. And also in part of that, the PMEA Union agreed to have more flexible clerks to allow them to work in different departments and not be tied to one, whether it's town clerk's office, the finance, or tax collector's office. I would like to see us not approve this budget tonight, and I would like to request or make a motion that we remove the clerk from the canvassing office, move it into the town, move it to the town clerk, which would give them, give, excuse me, the clerk's office, two clerks, and allow flexibility to be able to move that clerk around during times of non-voting times. Granted, this year is a, obviously a voting year, but it will allow the town administrator and the town clerk to budget times specifically when we're looking at vacation times for the town clerk's office or vacation time in the finance office. I don't think that the clerk and the way the adjustment to the charter and the PMEA contract is being utilized as best and as efficiently as it could have if that position was removed from the canvassing office and put into the general clerk's office. So my motion would be to table that budget to be able to look at the change it would make, because you would have to remove salaries and benefits and everything from the canvassing office and move it to the clerk's office, so we can look at both budgets tomorrow night. I know that's work for administrator and finance, but I think the town would be better served and there'd be a better flexibility for the overall operation of the town if the town clerk's office had the two clerks with the flexibility to move that around to different departments. So my motion would be to table this discussion until a secondary budget with the clerks moved is brought forward tomorrow night.
Mr. President, if I may address the idea, I'm not opposed to seeking savings through shared personnel and services. As, as a basic premise, it wasn't, my recollection of the charter change was to simply make the town clerk position no longer an elected position at all, but rather an employee of the town. I would want to know about the, I'm sure that there are differences in duties between what a town clerk's office clerk does versus a canvassing office clerk does. Are they cross-trained? Can they just walk across the hall and do the same thing? I don't know. And because I don't know, I'm, I'm not ready to support something like that. I'm not opposed to the idea, if there are savings to be had.
It's, it's not about savings, it's about efficiency. I'm not requesting to cut the position out of the budget. I'm just saying,
Fair enough.
It, I think we can better, part of the PMEA contract It I think we can better part of the PMEA contract and the negotiations was to move a lot of different and change the clerk's titles and a B clerk is a B clerk, a C clerk is a C clerk. I agree with you. There are things that the current clerk in the canvassing office might not know how to do. But part of these things and vice versa. But part of this decision would be to have that cross-training. So that if the clerk in the I'm trying to be very careful not to use names so I don't get in trouble. The clerk in the canvassing office is on vacation and the canvassing office needs help. One of the clerks from the Town Clerk's Office could go over and help or vice versa. The canvassing clerk can go over and be trained into the Town Clerk's Office. If it's tax time and there's a line up the up the hallway for people trying to pay their taxes in the finance in the tax office. We can hopefully cross-train the people to come down there and work with them. I think there's some efficiencies that can be done in total within Town Hall, and I think this move would allow for some of those efficiencies.
So if the premises we're not we're making stations of saving money, the the personnel numbers essentially stay the same.
Yes.
How would that affect if that wouldn't affect the budget, then I don't understand what your motion is.
My motion is to move to create that flexibility is to remove that clerk who traditionally has stayed in the canvassing office to the clerk's office, which would allow for greater flexibility from upper management to be able to move people around as needed for use in backfilling positions for either vacation or sick time or things like that. Which currently I don't believe is happening within Town Hall.
It's a little it's a little complex because well, because Town Clerk is responsible to the Town Administrator. The Town Cambasser is not.
Correct.
And so.
But the town but the clerk in the canvassing office should be responsible to the Town Administrator and be able to be moved around. Currently, that doesn't happen.
Perhaps we could staff in a number of ways.
Right.
I want so I don't oppose sort of a request to have the Administrator Cambasser and weigh in on the proposal. If we don't, if it doesn't affect the budget, you would move those positions where to clerk's offices?
Move A position.
A position.
But it would it does affect the budget. It does affect the bottom line of the.
Because you take it.
Correct. If it affects the department budgets, not the bottom line total budget for the year. But it grants flexibility and I think better services both the public and the Town Hall staff. Because we would have better cross-trained individuals.
If indeed, so I don't know if there's money in the budget for all this cross-training.
I don't think it's I think it's on the job training. I don't think we're sending somebody to canvassing school.
Some of it is and some of it isn't. I know that there are specific requirements for various clerk functions in in the clerk's office and specific requirements. You know, regulations and laws in the in Campus Office as well, so I it may not be expensive. I have no idea, but but it's not just sort of hang around and learn the job.
Agreed to a point, yes.
And I see we have.
Can I just add a point? The canvassing office is the only office where the clerk is required to be a registered voter in in Rhode Island. So if we have clerks that do live in Massachusetts, that do live outside of the community. They could not work in the canvassing office. So that is that is one of the distinctions in the job description.
I think we could work around that. I don't think I don't know how many of our clerk staff live outside of Rhode Island.
So.
One, and she's retiring.
So could could we get in a second recommend date? Well. No, my my point is is if to to try to move this along if we have a motion and a second to table it. This does. Do you have enough time to make an assessment and a recommendation for tomorrow night? Mr. Rayner, would you have? Would that be enough time?
The numbers are easy.
No, but I mean, the the numbers and logistically does it work?
With regard to with regard to that position. Little history, when it was decided that that position was going that that used to be a part-time position. And it was decided that we would make that position full-time. And there was a temp clerk in there who was essentially there almost full-time. So that position was eliminated. We made the clerk position full-time. And there was an understanding that we would cross-train the clerk. And unfortunately, I have not enforced that.
And this is really more, I think, to the point of this is more of an operations thing. So I mean, I I would I would like to know from your perspective of overseeing the operations of Town Hall, does it work? Yes, no, and maybe get that, you know.
Well, we have a fine example right now. We have we have a clerk in the Finance Department who is currently cross-training in the tax office and spends a portion of her week down there every week.
So I have a question. Does where this position live in the budget matter? Because you're talking about there are clerks that are currently in different departments that are cross-trained to fill in. So can't we just do the cross-training and not move it in the budget?
Yes, I understand your point completely. And I'm trying to be impartial here. I don't have a dog in a fight, quite frankly, but you know, that I think to to Mr. Hamilton's point or Mr. Katzman, I forget who brought it up, the clerk doesn't report to me.
The camcorder.
Or I meant the camcorder doesn't report to me. So if I'm reading the intention correct here, this would make it easier for the administration to assign that clerk than to take it from somebody who doesn't report to the Town Administrator, if I'm reading that correctly. I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I think that's what is going on.
Yes. I'll allow the words to be put in my mind.
Yeah, we're just looking for an arrangement that gives you greater flexibility in utilizing staff.
I that's what I'm understanding. I just want everybody to understand. We are in a midterm election year, and I do know that Jackie is quite busy. So we would not do anything that would hamper her ability to fulfill her duties as the Town Register. But I'm all for cross-training. It's it's very difficult to Town Hall when somebody takes vacation. And we don't have somebody that can fill that position because the reality is many people become entrenched in their jobs. And it's it's very easy to become siloed. We're trying to change that.
Which would work both ways. So if if this clerk position is now in the clerk, under the clerk's budget. So many clerks. It will allow not only for the current clerk in the canvassing office to be trained as a canvassing clerk. It would also allow for the clerks that are in the clerk's office to go over to canvassing and be training that as well. So if the clerk in the canvassing office is on vacation and the camcorder needs help, somebody can go over there helping. They're all cross-trained. Just like it's happening between Finance and Tax Clerk's Office. I think it just makes the Town Hall work better if there's that flexibility there. And that would be a reason why to move the money to the clerk from the clerk's canvassing office over to the clerk's office. Functions wouldn't change. She would still be in the canvassing office, obviously, from this year because it's it's a voting year.
I'm in favor of tabling it to hear further comment tomorrow. I'm not sure I support it.
Right.
For reasons after I think about it overnight, I'll voice.
Okay. So you can sleep on it.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I think our administrator would be in the best position to assess as to whether this gives him more flexibility or not. So maybe you could look at it, Rich, and kind of give us your thoughts tomorrow.
Be happy to.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table this till tomorrow. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. I think.
Are we adjourning or are we if we have to adjourn, right? We're not continuing our journey.
We can adjourn at any time.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. We'll see everyone tomorrow night.
Thank you very much.
That's all.